We are waiting for Commissioner Oddman.
Yes, there she is. So with that, I would like to bring this meeting to order. This is the Dania Beach City Commission Virtual Regular Meeting. It is April thirteenth and it's seven o'clock P M. Call the roll, please.
Mayor James.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Oddman.
Yeah.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney Ansborough.
Yeah.
Can we please have a moment of silence? Can we add to that moment of silence our former mayor Pat Florrie as well as Congressman Alcee Hastings? Thank you. Can we please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag. Wanted to bring back the summer job program. I did speak with Career Source Broward on some numbers. So it is a turnkey type of situation in a program. And I had a meeting, I think, with city manager, Mr. Chen. And was Frank there? City manager Frank there?
I think it was, it may have been Eric, Mayor.
Okay, okay, it may be Eric to bring this program that they have been doing for quite some time. I did have a presentation, but I didn't fix it up the way I wanted to because I had an accident with my hand and I was unable to do that. But for the numbers for three thousand dollars a student, it includes, it includes staff. So it includes the overhead costs that would follow the kids around. Make sure that they do the eight-week program. They would go and make sure that they are doing what they're supposed to be doing. They would deal with any conflicts. It would help them with their time sheets. They would do a training and give them the supplies three days before they start. And they would help them with anything that they needed in order to prepare for the jobs. They do also place the students at the jobs. So as of today, twenty-six students from Dania Beach has applied to this program. But they do like a lottery pick and so they do a random selection. And only nineteen of our students have been chosen. And because this is the first year and we are getting on super late, they are no longer really accepting applications in order to facilitate new applications because that would take a lot of more effort from Career Source Broward, who gets a lot of their funding through the C S C Broward. And so for I, I am, what I am asking is that we fund the additional seven, seven students that, from Dania Beach, that will be placed and they could be also placed within our city with jobs with the city of Dania Beach. And they could be placed also with Dania Beach businesses. That is up to our discretion here on the board. But again, it is around three thousand dollars per student. And I was going to present for twenty and thirty, but because they've already funded nineteen of our students, only seven are, have not been funded. And so I am asking for that funding. And then for next year that we could get with the city manager and come up with a program, maybe that we can do a fifty-fifty or a match program with them for the summer job program until we are able to kind of facilitate it ourselves. The best investment is that, you know, they are going to get food and they are going to get all of the supplies and tools that they need in order to be able to go to the different job markets where they will be placed. And they will have someone from Career Source follow them through the program and to make sure that they are communicating with the employer and the youth that is involved. And so I think it is a great idea to, to start with. The number is only seven and so that is far below what I, what the ask was going to be. But I think it would be great to make sure that all of our, all of the kids who have taken advantage of this program could be notified and be funded with the program. City manager, did I miss anything?
No, Mayor, I was looking at my notes. You pretty much covered everything.
Okay, do we have any discussion or issues or? Yes, Commissioner Davis.
So basically, we're talking about twenty-one thousand dollars for seven children?
Yes, but it'll, it'll cover them, it'll fund them for the entire summer. It'll give them wages for the entire summer. Again, it is, it'll give them funding, sorry, for the entire summer. So our summer job, eight weeks, it'll, it'll pay, I believe, almost nine dollars an hour for them to be able to, to work throughout the summer. So whereas we used to have a job program called Beta, we no longer have a job program. And this will not take from any of our staff and any additional time that will be needed because overhead, overhead and staff and all of that is within Career Source Broward.
And do these kids already have placement at a specific job with a particular company already? Or that's what Career Source Broward would be doing?
So Career Source Broward, they partner with the different businesses and they will be able to, I don't know why, can't hear me. Career Source Broward will place them. They do all of that placement, but they did tell us that if we wanted them placed at just Dania Beach businesses, if we wanted some of them placed at our Parks and Rec or rather that be Public Services or in City Hall, they would get with the city manager and H R department in order to facilitate that as well.
Okay, so my only concern is that, you know, I think it's always good to try to get the youth to be employed over the summertime. It sounds a little expensive to me and I just feel that, I know that there are several other programs out there. So I just want to make sure that we wouldn't be duplicating, you know, an opportunity that I know Broward County is doing something. I heard that the Urban League is doing something. So I, I really would want to see why this would be unique to Dania Beach to spend twenty-one thousand dollars on seven students. So that's where my concern is, is that we have other programs that are similar.
Well, they, they've been operating for, I don't know, if it was nineteen years they've been doing this. And they also partnered with the city of Fort Lauderdale and a lot of the other cities. I think that they said maybe Sunrise or Lotter Hill that actually, you know, whatever kids that, that qualify or that are, apply for it, they fund a match to that. So say for instance, if twenty kids apply through there, they go and they apply a match and their logos are then added to the flyer and they're able to go in and draw in. So we wouldn't be duplicating because we are actually joining in on something that is already very popular and that happens every year. I haven't really heard or seen anything kind of promoted from those other agencies that, that you listed. But this wouldn't be us doing something duplicated or, or separate. But in fact, investing in, in a program that's already existing.
Those are just my concerns for right now. I would, I would want to look at the other programs that are out there and see if we can get some information from Parks and Rec and see, you know, what the comparison is and what this program is doing that the other programs are not. So that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Luella.
Yes, I too appreciate having kids working during the summer. Actually, I mean, as a kid, I worked all year round. I think it's a good, it's a good character building tool to have kids working early and learning the value of the dollar. I do have a couple of questions though. What, what's the age group? Is there an age limitation?
Sixteen to eighteen.
Okay. And where's the money coming from? Because it's not something that was budgeted. So where would the money be coming from?
You have, I believe, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in your commission contingency. I'm sorry, in your commission contingency.
Okay. And maybe the city manager may be able to answer this as well. Do we have a need for employees in the city that are kids? Like, do, do we have, do we have places for them to work? That's what I'm looking for.
Well, when, when we met with Career Source Broward, we, we asked that question because we're preparing for our, our fall internship program. So when we put it out there to the department directors, no one really had a need that they could fill. But when we did speak to Career Source, they would place the children. So even though we may not have a need this year in our city and any of the departments, Career Source has a list of partnered agencies that they could pair our kids with them.
Okay. All right. I think that answers what I need. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Okay. How does Career Source get this list of placements for these job opportunities?
I'm, I'm unsure of who on their staff that they have that does the outreach. But again, they've been doing it for nineteen years. So they have a pretty healthy list of businesses that want to be a part of it. And if, if you like, say your business, for instance, if your business wanted to be a part of it, you could too. Because we did tell them, what if we wanted all Dania Beach restaurants or businesses to, for our kids to work at? What if we wanted it just based in Dania Beach? They said that they could go, go back and look at the businesses in Dania Beach with the help of us. And I, I, what I did was I volunteered Mr. Chen and the C R A to see what businesses that we have here that could you utilize this program. But they would go through and you all would do a contract with Career Source Broward with the understanding of how it was going to work. And you would work directly with Career Source Broward then to place the kids.
Is there, is there an opportunity to see the, you know, where those, these people, the children or young youth are placed? So we have an idea where our money is going to. You know, I'd like to see what type of jobs they're going for to see if it's, if they're all practical, you know, for approval type of thing too. I mean, give them three thousand dollars. It's like me being in business, you know, why would I, why would I hire a child sixteen to eighteen years old if they're not qualified to do the job at my store? I'm just curious to know whether they're being placed, if they're able to do the job or they're just being placed because it's a job.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, if I may through the mayor, if I may through the mayor. Our, our H R director informed me and I, I think the mayor had already mentioned it, that, that Michael Chen, our, our executive director for the C R A, had been working with some businesses. So maybe he could give an update. We don't know what businesses those are yet, but Michael was tasked with working with local businesses in, in the C R A to see if any of those businesses could use a sixteen to eighteen-year-old that would meet the criteria. And the screening is done through Career Source.
I would just, I would just like to see if we're, if we approve the seven people that we're paying for. I'd like to see them placed in Dania Beach. That would be, I, I think that'd be good for us to have our money going to our, our city.
Right. I, I, I agree with that. That's, that was one of the questions that I asked. What I could do is Mrs. King, her name is Latonya King, I believe her name is, from Career Source Broward. She was unable to make this meeting, but I could invite her to the next meeting and she could answer intimately those kinds of questions because I, I don't, I don't work there. So I don't know some of the specific questions that you all have. But I do know that it's a great program and that we do need to make a decision on this sooner rather than later. I know that the first time that I brought it up, I, I was, I, I told you all that it was around three thousand dollars per youth for the entire summer because that, that's what I, that's what I received on the flyer that was sent from the chamber. So I'll, I'll have her make a presentation. I'll have her make a presentation at the next meeting, a brief presentation, just so she can answer some of the other questions. So we can make a decision whether or not we want to move forward with this.
Sounds great, Mayor.
All right, with everyone? Okay, awesome. Next, we have the Memorial Tree Program presentation by our Public Services Director Fernando Rodriguez. Hi Fernando, good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing great, thank you. Okay, I think we're going to put it up on the screen now. There you go. Thank you so much, Frank, or I guess Monica or Frank. Good evening, everyone. Fernando Rodriguez, Director of Public Services. I hope everybody's having a great evening. We're really very pleased to be able to bring to you this overview of a proposed Memorial Tree planting program. I'd like to first thank a few people for helping us put it together. Katia Borti, who really helped me out with some of the graphics on the slides, as well as Carl Kalishan, our landscape manager, who has a lot of input into this. This, we looked at about seven different cities in doing the research and I was able to glean into what St. Augustine is doing, cities like Vero Beach, Naples. And we tried to get, take the best of each city while still tailoring the program to our resources and our context. Because every city is a little different, obviously. So next slide. The planting of Memorial Trees has really been around for quite a while. And trees have been planted in, across the world, really in different cities for, in honor of our loved ones and as a symbol of basically our affection for someone, for, for one of our loved ones. And also it is really a way to benefit the community. We're planting a tree that is a living thing that everyone enjoys. And there's also other benefits that are on the slide, but it increases tree canopy, obviously, and provides more shade. It's just good for the environment. So it, it's really a win-win situation. Next slide. Now, the most important part, I guess, one of the most important parts is what are, what are the three species that we're putting in this proposal at this point? We're going to start with the hardwood. Obviously, we all know and love the oak tree. This is a, we're looking at starting out with a, upon someone requesting an oak. It's going to be a great, a great number one, Florida number one quality tree. As you see there, single leader, strong structure, about ten, eleven to twelve feet high. That's a forty-five gallon container with a twelve-foot-high oak. Now, on the right is what it can become eventually, obviously. That is a specimen probably seventy, eighty years old, the specimen is not older. So that is what eventually an oak can become. The cost that we are looking at for the program at this point is basically the city's cost of four hundred dollars for the oak tree planted, that includes the planting and of course, the initial watering and so forth. So that is the, the more expensive of the choices of the trees. And again, this is a, not a very fast-growing tree, but it becomes beautiful and very large, as you can see on the photo to the right. Next slide. We're also offering a few, at this point, a few species in the, in the flowering type of tree. And there you see what, a tree that many of us are familiar with, the Crepe Myrtle and the Bulnesia. There's a couple of more, but let's stay with these two for now. These two are fairly fast-growing trees. The, the cost of the tree is, of these trees, the entire range of flowering trees that we're going to talk about is between one sixty and one hundred and eighty dollars range. They'll be coming in about a nine-foot to eleven-foot height. And the, the Crepe Myrtle could grow, grow to twenty-five feet pretty much maximum. And they're fairly fast growers. The Bulnesia can, can actually get that taller to forty feet plus, also fairly fast-growing trees. And basically, the, they bloom, all these species that we're going to see here, we're offering, we're talking about four in the program, they all are, they bloom in the spring to mid-summer time range. Next slide, please. Thank you. Sorrel Magnolia is probably the largest species that we're talking about here as far as blooming trees, flowering trees. They can get up pretty high to fifty feet or so eventually. Not a very fast-growing tree, beautiful tree. And the initial size, again, nine to eleven feet is what we're looking at to procure upon request. To the right, you have the very much-loved tree, the Cassia Javanica. And this, actually, the Cassia fiscula is this particular species. This is a moderate grower. It can get up to twenty feet tall. And they do sometimes bloom in the fall. But typically, again, the expectation is these trees are going to bloom generally in the spring to mid-summer. Some may surprise us and so that bloom in the fall. So these are the four trees. Again, they range in price, the blooming, the flowering trees, one sixty to one eighty versus the first one we saw, the oak, which is a, you know, a, a more expensive tree. This is all the city's cost. We simply are providing the pricing, passing on the pricing that we will get at the vendor. Next slide, please. Now, obviously, an important part of the Memorial Tree Program is to have a plaque, right? To commemorate the individual being memorialized. And we have, at this point, to keep it simple, two types of plaques, the bronze and a material called the holy bronze at the bottom. Holy bronze is very similar to the bronze, yes, almost as durable. It's just not the real premium material. You can see the mounting there. We're looking at a forty-five-degree angle post on the ground in front of the tree. The pricing here varies. Obviously, bronze is more expensive. A smaller bronze plaque is about two hundred and ninety dollars and the larger bronze is about four hundred and thirty-five. So the less priced, lower-priced holy bronze below, it starts around two fifty and goes up to two, four forty if you go for the larger, the larger side. The, the range really is two fifty to four forty at the entire range, depending on the material and depending on the size that one chooses. So it, it gives the applicant a, a, a nice variety. Next slide, please. Thank you. Now, this is an important slide because we are trying to start out with a, a wide range of locations. There's about a dozen locations on, on the map now. Although they are pretty well dispersed, there are opportunities in the future to expand it. You got some areas particularly in the center of the, of the core of the city, then some out west, a little bit to the east. We're trying to see if we can expand this eventually to some of the parks, depending on the parks' master plan and the engineering behind the master plan and what, what they have in mind for the grounds of those parks. We don't want to plant a tree after, unearth it later. Same thing with the Southeast Drainage Project and its impact. When we see the engineering specifics of the Southeast Drainage Project, then we can look at opportunities in the southeast to plant trees. At this point, it is the beginning of the program. We're going to roll it out. This is eleven or twelve locations, which are a good, a good start. Capacity will be limited in some locations and it'd be more generous in other locations, depending on the overhead wiring, et cetera. So we are looking at this initial set of locations, but it is not the final, the final set of locations. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. This is an overview, not a lot of detail.
I have a few questions. I think it's a great presentation. I have a few questions. We can start with the location and we can go back to slide seven. Why didn't we include our other parks that have facilities? Like I see PJ Millie, but I don't see Frost. I don't see C W. Not saying that they could choose it at this time because of things that may happen, but what makes more?
what makes one park a priority over the others or?
Well, that's a great question, uh, Mayor. Uh, we looked at PJ Millie and looked at a few other parks. Uh, it appeared from, again, I, I also rely on some of my, my staff's expertise. Uh, it appears that I did that location of PJ Millie, there is a a more opportunity, more land, more area. Uh, the other parks, again, and again, it may turn out that when we look at the master plan in more detail, or when, as it flashes out, PJ Millie may not be as desirable. We, we thought it would be as, one of the safe spots to, to plant. We would like to plant at all the parks. But um, there are other locations, uh, right of ways that we have pointed out on the map that are, that are actually uh, at the cemetery for another location. So if for the beginning of the, of the program, it's pretty, a pretty good wide variety, but I see, I definitely understand your point and your question. We don't want to risk uh, going into land or the grounds of parks that might be impacted by the master plan, the same as we don't want to risk the southeast. There's a lot of areas we, as I drove around the southeast, that looked good for planting. But until we know more about the pipe uh, and the trenching and the kind of work that's gonna happen in the next couple of years, we don't want to really uh, risk putting trees, uh, additional trees in the southeast area. So the same thing applies to, to the parks. It's, it's really an evolving map. This is not set.
Okay, um, what would be the total cost of an applicant that wanted to have uh, to plant a tree? Would be the four hundred dollars plus whatever the cost is for?
Yeah, the, the, actually, the, the range, um, if you really look at the, at the smallest plaque in the less, in the least premium, in the holy bronze, not the bronze, and the smallest and one of the lower priced blooming trees, flowering trees, the, then you're looking at, uh, you can go get into the program for about four hundred dollars for the whole thing. If you wanna go to the, for the oak and the larger plaque and bronze with thirty words and the whole nine yards, then it costs around seven hundred and fifty dollars. So the range is almost four hundred to the mid seven hundreds. And so that's quite a range.
Responsible for maintaining the tree, um, are?
The, the tree itself will be nurtured at the beginning and to grow at the more important critical stage uh, by the city. But the plaque itself, what I, again, this program is, uh, this is an overview. Uh, I'm, I'm working out the, the details and so forth, but and some with the input that I'm getting tonight. But certainly, the plaques, the plaques are typically maintained by the uh, the, the person who, who applies for the tree. Uh, the brushing it, dusting it, whatever it takes. Imagine if we have many, many trees all over the city. It's an additional burden, additional workload. So the plaque is something that in most cities, that we looked at, the seven cities, we, we looked at, the plaque is maintained by the person who, who, who asks for the tree.
Is there a warranty for the plaque?
Is there one?
Is there a warranty?
Oh, that's a great question. Um, I don't believe so, but I will check into that.
I will, I would like to have some type of assu- assurance that there is, because, just because we have a lot of storms and things may happen, and I don't wanna get into a, a situation where we don't know whether or not who is going to be responsible, or at least let the applicant know if anything happens to the plaque, who's responsible for it. Am I, I think?
Great points.
Question, um, is, are any of these blooming trees messy?
The majority are the cities. They do drop leaves, uh, but it in degree of messiness, nothing like a uh, black olive tree, nothing like that. They simply shed leaves and it's, the leaves kind of degrade.
Because I don't know, I don't, I don't know much about trees and different types of trees, but I know some trees. When you go to someone's house and all of those flowers, it's just a nightmare. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna create a nightmare of the trees. Like, I like the program, but I would like some type of a tree that's not too messy to maintain.
We'll look into it. I know that the Southern Magnolia, which is a very, very loved tree, does uh, does shed leaves. I mean, they all shed to some degree or another. And I've had good experience personally with other, other cities with Crepe Myrtles. The mess is not really, it, it kind of withers away. It, it's not like the mess you see with Royal Poincianas.
Right.
But, but yes, they're not, they're not, none of these are like impeccably clean uh, as far as the, under the ground. But they're not gonna be like a black olive tree, which is stained sidewalks, et cetera. So there are, there is degree of messiness, I, I guess what I'm saying. This is, this is not in the, the high degree, but we will check into it to, to, to make sure.
Okay, those are my questions. I'm, I'm in support of it. I think it's a great program. It's not a cost to the city. And I think it'd be a, a great way to memorialize the loved one.
Thank you.
I can't raise my hand, Mayor.
Oh, I can't see when the.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so Fernando, did we look at? I, I mean, I, I like the, the tree program. It's very, it's very nice. But when, you know, I look at what all the other cities are doing, it, it seems like we would benefit from maybe having a more comprehensive program um, where like their park amenities, if people wanted to um, memorialize their loved ones uh, with a park bench. Um, uh, I've seen dog, uh, like dog waste receptacles for people who are dog people. Uh, water fountains, uh, the benches I know are the most popular. Um, with the, the new artificial reef, we have the option of putting things uh, in the water to add to the reef to memorialize loved ones and family. Um, and uh, what's some of the other really popular ones that I saw? Um, and then bricks as well that went along with the memorial walls. So it, it seems like a program that maybe we could build on. Um, because there are so many ways that people, when they, they lose a loved one, uh, that they may want to memorialize them. And uh, it seems that it may be a missed opportunity if, uh, the pier, I'm sorry, the pier was another one that I was thinking of that seems popular. Um, that if we didn't think of all the different ways that, that people may want to do that um, and remember their loved one, if the person, you know, if you live in Danny Beach, there's a good chance you love going to the ocean. Uh, you're an outdoorsy person that maybe really enjoys our parks. So did we look at anything like that, building a comprehensive program with a, a good number of options?
That's a great idea, um, Commissioner. And uh, this is the beginning, the, I guess this is the base, the foundation of the Memorial Tree Programs. Of course, we can expand to benches and other things you mentioned. However, we wanted to kind of start out simple. Uh, particularly, and the manager certainly can, of course, I welcome her input on this, but particularly given the number of projects that we have on the, that we have going right now in the department, we've really figured that let's start simple and basic, and we can build upon it in time. No question that you have your ideas. I've seen park benches in different cities, even walking around the park with people's names on it, memorialized. Uh, you mentioned water fountains, you mentioned uh, several other um, parks, park uh, um, features. But um, this is a way to start, and we can certainly build on it. There's nothing that limits us from going beyond trees.
Well, right, since it's funded by the person, I mean, it, who purchases the, the thing, the cost to the city is nominal. So it seems like it would be really nothing.
Administration, it's an administration thing, yes.
Right, to, to, to put something together that's a little bit more comprehensive.
Commissioner, if I may, through, through the mayor, those are very, very good points. And, and thank you for coming and meeting with me here and walking eh, through City Hall. And we also discuss um, the possibility of a future, um, not just benches and amenities for the park, but we can also do like, like pavers. Um, and Fernando, I don't know if you remember, in South Miami, where they did downtown with pavers. And I think as we put our, our parks' master plan in action, um, not only can we plant trees in our parks, but we can also have memorial benches and even identify areas in the design for these parks that have pavers in different areas of the park facility. So like Fernando said, this is the tip of the iceberg to get, to get us moving forward, but we can really have a series of a lot of cool things to memorialize and honor folks.
Thank you. Yes, well, well said, well put. Thank you.
I, I also have my hand raised. You can't see me.
Sorry, I know, I can't see. I don't know what's, I don't know what's happening where you can't use the raise your hand tool.
We're all co-hosts, that's why you can't raise your hand when you're a co-host, so. Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I just, I wanna say thank you, Fernando, for uh, putting this all together with your team. I know, uh, we talked on the phone a little bit about my mom's and what we're gonna do for that, and I really do appreciate that. Um, uh, I also, I know, we, at IT Parker, they have bricks already in the walkway there that are memorial bricks. So yeah, probably that definitely would be a good program in the future as well to continue and expand it beyond IT Parker. Um, and the benches, I think there's one in Melaleuca. I think there's, there's, there's some in a few places already as well, so definitely. It becomes like a nice little turnkey service that like you can do, you can pick and choose what you wanna do. I think that would be awesome. Um, but I, I, I hope we can uh, launch this fairly soon. I know we, we were talking about different dates, so I'm hoping that we can get it done fairly soon, because I, I uh, we'll, we'll talk more, but I, I know I'm I'm very anxious to, to get it done for my mom. So thank you.
All right, well, I think you have everyone's support for it. I don't know if we need a Tom, do we need a motion in a second, or I, I think we already passed it before?
I think we already agreed.
Alright, I can't, okay.
Thank you.
The consensus is fine.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And now we have a presentation by Joe Scott, Supervisor of, the County Supervisor of Elections. Congratulations. Can you get him on the screen? There he goes. Good evening. How are you?
I'm great, Mayor James. Thank you so much for having me on. Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, wonderful. Thanks a lot for having me on. Um, I am, the reason I came to uh, visit with you all tonight is to talk about our high school voter registration drive, which is taking place from April twenty-first through April thirtieth. And this is a program that has actually been going on for at least twenty years. Uh, but it hasn't quite gotten the attention that it really deserves. And this year, we have a unique challenge due to COVID nineteen. Many of the students that we're trying to reach out to aren't going to school. So although we're working closely with the school district on this, uh, through all the social studies teachers, uh, we actually need additional help from the community to help us get the word out. And we're hoping that the city of Danny Beach will partner with us and help us get the word out to the community, to the families, to um, make sure that the students are engaged and actually take this as an opportunity to register to vote. Um, so what they need actually is they have to be a US citizen over the age of sixteen in order to qualify for the program. So large, virtually all the students that are out there, you know, will be able to uh, go ahead and register to vote. They won't be able to actually vote until they turn eighteen. But as long as they are a US citizen and they're over the age of sixteen, we can go ahead and get them registered now, and that's one less thing for them to worry about in a couple of years. Are there any questions?
Um, is there anything that you need from us?
Yeah, absolutely. I just need your help getting the word out, you know, so there, I know there were some materials uh, that were sent over from the office. And I just wanted to um, sort of give that personal appeal um, that we need to make sure that um, all of the, you know, that we get this word out to the parents and to the families. You know, we wanna make sure that they know that this is going on so that they can follow up with their students. And I know that you all have a tremendous amount of reach in your community. You know, some um, you know, some cities have uh, you know, put this information on their website. Some are using electronic signs around the city to uh, alert the community that this is going on. Others have, you know, email lists, social media platforms, um, different means of communicating with the public. And I hope that you all, you know, will partner with us and help us get the word out.
Okay. City Manager, is this something that we can um, definitely push on our social media? And then we can push it again on our CRA's social media to make sure that we are, are definitely telling the importance of registering to vote. And we understand this is a unprecedented year with voting and um, with getting people in these seats. And so I think it's very important that we continue to educate our communities and our schools and our, and our kids especially, because as soon as they turn eighteen, they have to understand that they can go and, and fight those lines and, and you're part of the process.
Certainly, Mayor. You can count on us to get them.
They won't be fighting lines in Barra County. I'm sorry.
You said they won't be fighting lines in Barra County?
No, no. If I have anything to say about it, there won't be any lines, but uh, that's my goal anyway. Sorry, uh, City Manager, I mean to cut you off.
To that. All right. Well, thank you so much, um, Mr. Scott. Join us.
I appreciate it. Thank you all so much. And uh, you know, I really appreciate everything. I know you guys are gonna help out a lot. Uh, we wanna get them engaged as early as possible so we can have lifelong voters, and that only strengthens all of our communities. Thank you all again. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Earth Day proclamation. I'm going to ask Commissioner Davis to read that proclamation since she is doing her her thing with the beach and um, and one of the things with Earth Day, so.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you very much. Uh, whereas the first Earth Day was held on April twenty-second, nineteen seventy, when San Francisco activist John McConnell and Wisconsin Senator Gaylord Nelson separately asked Americans to join in a grassroots demonstration. Dealing with dangerously serious issues concerning toxic drinking water, air pollution, and the effects of pesticides, an impressive twenty million Americans, ten percent of the po- population, ventured outdoors and protested together. And whereas Earth Day twenty twenty-one will mark the fifty-first anniversary of this holiday, typically, Earth Day is assigned a different theme or area of focus each year. This year's theme is Restore Our Earth. And whereas we all continue to deal with ongoing coronavirus pan- pandemic, we are reminded of the importance of maintaining a clean and healthy environment. The global community faces extraordinary challenges such as global health issues, food and water shortages, and economic struggles. All people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment as well as an economic growth opportunity. And whereas enhancing and improving our green economy will require coro- cooperation across all sectors of society. We are all caretakers of our planet and have an obligation to combat climate change, environmental degradation, to, to preserve the earth's beauty as well as its resources. Whereas, this obligation extends not only to today's caretakers, but also to future generations who will inherit our planet. On the fifty-first anniversary of Earth Day, the Danny Beach, the city of Danny Beach is committed to building on the successes we have achieved so far and look forward to support this issue of environmental protection through local activism and raising local awareness. Now, therefore, on behalf of the, the City of Danny Beach Commission, I Tam James, I guess we don't read that. Denver James, Mayor of the City of Danny Beach, due here by claim. Earth Day, Thursday, April twenty-two, twenty-second, twenty twenty-one as Earth Day.
Thank you.
Is that, are we good with that, right?
Yeah, we're good with that. Thank you. We'll go on to um, the proclamation for Autism World Autism Awareness Month. Whereas autism, fast growing developmental disability in the United States is an urgent public health crisis that demands a national response. And Autism Awareness Month is a chance to encourage our residents to become educated and informed about programs, services, and opportunities to support individuals with autism. And whereas Autism Spectrum Disorder represents a broad group of disorders that are very, very widely from, oh, that was a tongue twister, mild to severe, and is characterized by difficulty with social interaction, communication, and severely limited interests and repetitive behaviors. And whereas in recognition of the growing needs of the worldwide autistic community and to raise awareness about autism spectrum disorders and the need to provide services to individuals and families who are affected, the United Nations has sanctioned April second as World Autism Awareness Day. And whereas Autism Speaks, an organization dedicated to enhancing lives today and accelerating the spectrum of solutions for tomorrow, promotes the awareness of autism worldwide. And whereas, in light of the growing impact of autism spectrum disorders and the need for greater awareness, Autism Speaks hold their, holds their Light Up Blue Campaign on, on World Autism Awareness Day, designed to increase awareness about autism by asking to participate, by asking participating organizations to turn their lights blue. And whereas the city of Danny Beach is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Awareness Month and World Autism Awareness Day in hopes that it will lead to a better understanding of the disorder. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Danny Beach City Commission, I, Tamara James, Mayor of the City of Danny Beach, Florida, do by here proclaim April twenty twenty-one as World Autism Awareness Month and April second, twenty twenty-one as World Autism Awareness Day in the city of Danny Beach to raise public awareness of autism and admire the issues surrounding autism as well as to increase knowledge of the programs that have been and ha- are being developed to support individuals with autism and their families. Thank you. Next, we have citizens' comments. Next, we have citizens' comments. If you are online and you wish to address the commission, please use your raise your hand tool, and you will be recognized. You will have to state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. First, we'll have Jane, Jane, from your iPhone. You are unmuted. Oh, it's Jamie, I'm assuming.
Jamie, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Please um state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Jamie Gonzalez, and my address is eighty-five thirty-five Northwest Thirty-second Court, Miami, Florida, three-three-one-four-seven. Um, and I am currently um beha- on behalf of Faulkner Pl- Plastic in Hialeah, uh seventy-two seventy-five West Twentieth Avenue, Hialeah, Florida, three-three-zero-fourteen.
Right.
Thank you. Um, so basically, I, we're trying to set up a um beach cleanup in um Dania Beach. So I am wondering if there's any possibility to have the uh fee waived for like event or something like that. But I was speaking with Parks and Rec, and they said that there would be a fee attached.
Okay, um, I I don't know how we typically do it with the other, like, um, the Surf Riders Foundation and the other organizations that host those beach cleanup, city manager. Do you have any information on that?
I'm I'm not too sure.
Uh, through the mayor, um, we can actually waive fees um for these types of community service oriented uh projects. Um, but I also wanted to let her know, since we have Commissioner Davis's uh project coming up on April twenty second, um, that that could be another good opportunity, but we're also going to be working with Commissioner um Oddman in another beach cleanup in May to kick off our um one thousand mermaids project. So there's going to be good opportunities to partner with an existing program. Or if you wanted to do something se- uh separate, we certainly welcome um for you to help us keep our beaches clean and pristine.
Um, definitely. Actually, I think we would want to keep it separate because we also wanna um raise awareness because our company, or not the company, but just like companies like us just get a bad rep because we basically work with like performance plastics. So anything like acrylic or um outdoor, a playground, plastic, things like that. Um, so we just kind of want to also state the differences between single-use plastic um and then performance plastics as well, so.
Okay, certainly. Reach out to my office or through um the Parks Department, and we'll coordinate a meeting, and we could certainly plan on on making something happen for a mutual benefit.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Anyone else from the public? Um, Jeremy Katzman. All right, you're unmuted. There you go.
Hello.
Hi. Name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor James. Uh, my name is Jeremy Katzman. My address is three-four-zero-three Washington Lane, Cooper City, Florida, three-three-zero-two-six. Uh, I wanted to take a moment to say hello to uh the members of the commission and the residents of the great city of Dania Beach. Uh, my name's Jeremy Katzman, and I'm a candidate for Florida House District ninety-nine, which covers a significant portion of Dania Beach west of US one and touches seven other municipalities in Broward County. The seat is currently occupied by Representative Evan Jenny, who's term limited, so it's an open seat. Uh, and I just was hoping to uh briefly share a little bit about why I would love to represent uh this great community. I have a lifetime of personal, professional, and community experience that prepared me to serve in Tallahassee. I've spent my life fighting for people whose voices may otherwise be unheard, focusing on issues like affordable healthcare, quality education, equality, and economic opportunities for all. Uh, professionally, I serve in the administration for Nova Southeastern University's Health Professions Division, where I focus on developing degree programs and partnerships that help people achieve their dreams of entering the healthcare field. Uh, personally, I'm the son of a single mother, husband of a school speech pathologist, father of two young children, and I'm an active member, active member of the community, where I serve on a variety of civic and nonprofit boards. Uh, I'm also a cancer survivor, which has helped me shape my career and my drive to help others. I'm honored to have the support of uh many members of the community and elected officials who believe in my vision, our shared vision, to build a better Florida. I'm really excited about the opportunity to meet the residents of Dania Beach, uh, who I haven't had the chance to meet yet. I'm always accessible, and I would love the opportunity to speak with you and to serve the residents of Dania Beach in Tallahassee. Uh, as a parent, a cancer survivor, and a community leader, I'm running for state rep to use my career and my life experiences to build a better Florida. You can learn more about me at jeremycatman.com, or you can call my cell phone directly at nine-five-four-nine-oh-one-one-one-six-five. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that wishes to address the commission? Seeing as there is no one, we will move along to our public safety reports. Captain Marks, are you there? There you go. Wait, you're muted. Hold on. There you go.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Back in late December, we responded to a homicide at nineteen hundred Sterling Road, where an adult female was found deceased. Last week, we were able to charge one adult from Miami Gardens and one juvenile from Fort Lauderdale with first-degree murder. Since the last commission meeting, we responded to one aggravated assault, four auto thefts, one burglary business, seven burglary conveyances, three burglary residences, one robbery by sudden snatching, eight thefts, and three shoplifting calls, for a total of thirty-one crimes. We also made thirty-one arrests since the last commission meeting as well. We saw a decrease of one burglary business, a decrease of seven burglary conveyances, and a decrease of one burglary residence. Some notable arrests that we've had, a warrant and concealed weapons violation. A deputy conducted a traffic stop where a driver was found to be carrying a firearm concealed. He was taken into custody for carrying a concealed firearm as a convicted felon. The passenger of the vehicle also had a warrant. During the last two weeks, our crime suppression team has located two occupied stolen vehicles. The drivers of both vehicles were arrested and the cases were cleared. In one of the cases, the driver fled from the vehicle and was taken into custody shortly thereafter. It was found that the defendant in this case has a lengthy history for burglary and auto thefts. Vehicle theft. We had a call of a stolen vehicle that had just occurred. The vehicle was located via GPS tracking. Our deputies were directed to the area, and the suspect was subsequently apprehended. Post-meranda, the subject admitted to stealing the vehicle. Warrants for burglary and thefts. A suspect was in custody for multiple warrants and possession of stolen property. Our investigation revealed that the suspect had three credit cards and a driver's license of a person who was a victim of a conveyance burglary in the town of Davie. The suspect had a lengthy criminal history for burglaries and thefts and currently was on a ankle GPS monitor. As of now, the suspect has been charged with possession of cocaine and ten warrants for burglaries and thefts. Criminal mischief. A deputy observed an unknown subject walking away from an area that had recently been spray painted. A traffic stop was conducted, and the occupants were covered in paint. It was later discovered that both subjects tagged several areas in our city. Both individuals were each charged with four felony counts of criminal mischief and transported to the main jail. Our traffic enforcement unit continued with school zone enforcement presence along Southeast Fifth Avenue. Two citations were issued in the past two weeks during the morning hours. Not many vehicles were found to be speeding. We continued our presence on Southwest Fifty-third Court. Our speed trailer is still deployed, and no complaints have been received. The speed trailer seems to be slowing traffic. Our traffic enforcement unit submitted paperwork to the city in reference to erecting a stop sign at North Park Road and Southwest Fifty-third Court. On April fifth, we conducted pedestrian education and enforcement on Griffin Road from four PM to eight PM between Anglers Avenue and Southwest Thirty-third Avenue. We used a state grant to do this. Last meeting, I spoke about how our homeless outreach deputies began a self-neglect case in reference to a homeless subject in our city. A few days later, the homeless outreach team responded to the facility he was accepted into. They met with him to make sure all was well, and after much pushback on his part, he was happy and grateful for the assistance we were able to provide. We continue our regular patrols and checks at locations along Dania Beach Boulevard and federal highway corridors, as well as Griffin Road and four forty-one. This has continued to be effective in keeping the panhandling at intersections and loitering at the bus benches to a minimum. We were able to recently distribute ten more food boxes to residents throughout the city. Going to go over a couple of upcoming events real quick. Uh, this coming Saturday, April seventeenth, from ten AM to twelve PM, we're having a painting event with children with autism. It's going to be at Frost Park, which is three hundred northeast Second Street. On Saturday, April twenty-fourth, from ten AM to two PM, we're doing our National Prescription Drug Takeback Day, and that's going to be at Walmart and four hundred East Sheridan Street. That completes my report.
Captain, can you um just touch a little bit uh for the public, more so than anything, on what you all are doing to monitor and make sure we are addressing the the homeless situation that happens at Publix? Because it it grows, it's growing, and um I know that they are kind of like moving a little east of Publix now at that corner store or that convenience store of some sort. But I I get a lot of phone calls of people who are afraid to be used for transportation at those stops because I I know that we can't prohibit um people, the homeless, from sitting there, or maybe they said they're using the transportation, but in all honesty, they're not using the transportation. They they are, they are deterring um people from certain businesses, and especially that is one of the more problematic cases. And I want to ensure the public that you are, you know, that we are aware of it, and we are assessing and addressing the situation.
Oh, absolutely. All of our our deputies uh know know the drill. If we get a call or we observe uh a large crowd there, the the public transportation's been been free. So uh if they're waiting there and we see them get on the bus, that's fine. But if we see them not get on the bus is when we we can trespass them or uh take them to jail, which isn't what we want to do, but at the same time, if if they're trespassing um and and causing a scene or or preventing other people from sitting there that are going to ride the bus, then then we have an issue with that.
Don't don't we have a homeless outreach um person with the force that, do you think that they could prevent? Or from saying, you know, trespassing, taking to jail? Is that person in communication or in- interaction with them?
Oh, absolutely. They, the ones that are that are in our city are all all known by first name.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Thank you, Captain Marks.
Thank you.
Fellow star.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and our fine residents, Dania Beach. Um, I'd like to just uh I guess brag a little because Station One's still number one in the county because we're the continue to be the busiest um station in the county as far as call volume. Uh, this past month, we ran five hundred and ninety-four calls. Um, three hundred and fifty came out of Station One, two hundred and forty-four came out of Station Seventeen. And like I reported last month, um sixty-five percent of the time when Rescue One gets a call, um when Rescue One gets a call, uh there'll be another concurrent call, and sixty-five percent of that time, uh, there's a a another call comes in, so we get triplicates. So um, having said that, Station Seventeen uh in the last thirty days ran seventy-eight times um into Station One after Rescue One got a call, uh meaning that uh there was another rescue that came out of um either the airport, the seaport, or Hollywood uh as a mutual aid, automatic uh mutual aid uh to help us out with our calls. Uh, and you may ask, like, you know, Da- Dania Point was a topic at one point of, you know, how many calls they generate. So um this month, over the last thirty days, they uh only generated thirty-two calls. Um, that, they're not not as busy, uh and they're not uh full to capacity right now. Uh, fifty-three of the calls that we ran are what I call high calls uh that I I worry about, uh being that they're um on I ninety-five. So when you're I ninety-five, we have to have multiple units, uh rescue response, and usually a fire truck response with them to cover them, to make sure that um nobody else hits them, and then another fire truck response to cover them. So we have the uh crews fully covered. So um fifty-three uh calls is uh over the last month have been on I on the I ninety-five and five ninety-five quarter. Uh, currently, our team is working on the C um C E M P plan, that is your uh Community Emergency Management Plan, and that's um dealing with hurricanes and any emergencies, and I'll basically, we're updating it and uh try to uh bring us to um the better standards so that we can uh be better trained and uh work more efficiently during a an emergency. Our team completed the vulnerable population training, and basically, with that training being done, we're going to be able to go ahead and vet uh all the information uh that we have on file, uh meaning all the vulnerable population in Dania Beach, we'll be able to call them, uh verify that all their information is correct, and in case of emergency, we'll be able to contact them and get ahold of them and and then provide service to them uh during an emergency. Uh, last month, I saw something on Facebook from the city of Dania Beach that uh dealt with uh termites. And uh no sooner I saw that than um our stations or in general cleanup at the fire station discovered that we uh we had termites. Um, as of yesterday, we um took care of those little uh critters. So we took care of um, we both had both uh subterranean and uh wood-eating termites. So um that was dealt with uh pretty quickly, and um and it's been taken care of. So if you drove by the station and you saw that uh our offices were tented, that that is why. Um, over the last uh month, we've also been able to uh get new iPads. And what we're trying to do with that is um bringing our current crews to work more efficiently when they're out in the field, checking the hydrants and being able to map all their hydrants correctly correctly. So when you're standing out a hydrant, you can ma- map the actual location of that hydrant. So if we ever have a fire, it pops right up on our screen, and we know where to ca- catch a hydrant in case of a fire or an emergency. And uh lastly, I'd like to say tomorrow, we're going to do our bicycle safety class. So any citizen or anybody who's listening out there, please sign up. There's uh plenty of spots available. We have two classes tomorrow at um one at ten and one at six, so if you can sign up. Uh, we'd like to get you a a free helmet once you complete the class. And with that, if you have any questions?
No, I'll just thank you again um for uh hel- helping your staff, for helping me this this past week. I I had a little bit of a freak accident, and and I was one of those calls, I I'm assuming, to Station, to Station One, is it? Station Seven or Station?
Yeah, Station One.
Yeah, but um your guys were phenomenal, and um I I'm having surgery tomorrow, so hopefully, everything turns out great. And I just want to publicly thank your staff for the the prompt response and for killing me in the back of the end.
Our prayers are with you and good luck.
Thank you. Well, no one else has any comments, so have a good night, Chief. Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Do we have any pools? Or do we have a motion?
A motion, Mayor.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Bids and requests for proposals. Eight point one.
Eight point one is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, authorizing the award of invitation to bid I T B number twenty-one dash oh-oh-three Ocean Park Interim Gains from Providence Project to ADA Engineering, Inc., in the amount of two hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars, forty-four cents. Authorizing the privacy of officials to execute a contract, providing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date, public services. authorizing the proper city officials to execute a contract, providing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date, public services.
Do we have any discussion for this? Any questions or a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Want to pose? Eight point two?
Eight two, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, authorizing the award of invitation to bid ITV twenty-one dash oh oh two Citywide Speed Hump Improvement Project Phase One to Miguel Lopez Junior, Inc. in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand fourteen dollars, authorizing the proper city officials to execute the contract, providing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date, public services.
Um, I I have one question. Phase one, what exactly uh how much is that covering? I don't know, it's Fernando maybe.
I'm trying to, okay, uh yeah, I was trying to be unmuted. Thank you so much. Uh, about half of the project itself will be covered by this, uh so we have seventy-seven roughly, almost eighty speed humps that have to be addressed. So thirty to forty of them, and basically it will take us about, we estimate eight months, maybe closer to a year, but we're trying to expedite it to do it in less than 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 a year, the first phase.
So the first phase will cover the uh the already existing speed humps that you need to bring back into compliance?
Yeah, i- it's a mix. The the entire project is about um correcting speed humps in some places, in some cases relocating them, and in some cases, not very, not very many, removing them, but so it's it's a mix of measures throughout the entire project, but phase one, we we we're doing it in two phases, so what I'm saying is that phase one will probably take us about eight months, nine months to complete, not us, but the contractor.
Okay, any of the locations that you are removing are those um are any of those speed humps in locations that uh residents had petitioned to have speed humps? And if so, have we communicated that with those residents?
Okay, some of them would be, I could almost tell you without even looking, I don't have the 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 detail, the gran- granular detail in front of me, but like some of them would be, would have been requested, and we will notify the residents, uh but it's not like the majority of the case, so some of them we we have installed, I understand, in the past on our own, like meaning the city, the city installed them, but this is before my time, but some were requested, so I I eventually eventually say that, yes, some of the ones that we're removing or modifying would be ones requested by the petition process years back. We will not, we will find that out and notify the residents, yes.
Okay, and will it be permanently removed from the entire street, or will it be moved to a different location on that street? Oh, there you go.
Okay, yeah, I was trying to, yeah, I mean, I mean, struggling with the uh in some, okay, in some cases, they will seem to be relocated because they're too close to the corner or too close to each other. In other cases, they will have to be removed because of the the standard, they don't meet the standard, they were they were put down years ago, and it was done, not done per county standard, so again, and I hate to give answer, it's a mix. Some cases will be just relocated, maybe several, maybe a couple dozen dozen feet away, twenty, thirty feet, in other cases, it may be gone altogether. But that's a good point you're making. In the cases of people where we know there was requested by petition, we'll make every effort to notify those that were involved. That could be a little bit a bit of a challenge because it may have happened seven, eight years ago.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. I just I just want to know, so when we start getting, if we get any emails that are saying, oh, we fought and have this here, and you guys picked it up, then we we kind of kind of know what to tell them and to what direction to send them, so.
We'll try to 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 get ahead of it, but that's a great point. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else with any comments about eight point two? If not, motion in a second, please.
I'll move the item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to pose? Eight point three?
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, authorizing the award of invitation to bid ITV number twenty-one dash oh oh five Dana Cove Southwest Twenty-Fifth Waters Drainage Improvement Project to Miguel Lopez Junior, Inc. in the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and twelve dollars seventy-five cents, authorizing the proper city officials to execute a contract, providing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date, also public services.
Any discussion?
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Want to pose? Eight point four?
Is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, authorizing the proper city officials to rank design consultants for a request for qualifications process, an R F Q number twenty thousand, excuse me, twenty dash oh oh eight for engineering consulting services for designing of nine sewer lift stations and emergency backup generators, and authorize contract negotiations to begin with the top-ranked consultant, providing conflicts, further providing for an effective date, public services.
Any discussion for this item?
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Want to pose? Nine point five, eight, yeah, eight point five, sorry.
I don't, hold one second. I don't see it listed on my agenda. I have that in my book.
You want me to, you want me to read it?
Yes.
If not, I can read it.
Okay, I don't, thank you, Mayor.
All right, um eight point five, resolution number two thousand twenty twenty-one dash zero four six, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, authorizing the use of a sole-source vendor WAPRO, WAPRO, Inc. for purchasing Watt Stop Backflow Prevention Vials in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars and to exceed the city's annual vendor purchasing threshold amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, providing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date, public services. Do we have any discussion for this item?
Mayor, may I? Uh, that is actually consent item seven point five, which was already.
Oh. Oh, I'm on the, oh, I'm on the wrong page. Oh, that's my fault. So we're finished. Just read that last one, that. Sorry, Tom.
No problem. Got me nervous, sir.
I have them printed on both sides of the pages, so my pages got mixed up. So we are finished with that. We're on to discussion and possible action. Home homeless initiative, Commissioner Luella.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I think uh most of you know that I uh uh been wanting to do something with regard to homelessness for a while now, and um I've actually been doing some things uh in the background. Back when I was in law school, I actually worked with the homeless for um for about a couple of years, um working with legal aid and and some uh other items, so I ended up uh learning a lot of things from it from there, and I've also been following up with some further research now that I've been in office to try to um figure out some ways that we could um improve uh on on how we handle the homeless, so um as you all know, this is a transient problem. It's not something that knows borders, so although we may have a a a smaller problem in Dana Beach, cities surrounding us tend to have larger problems as well, and now it it spreads, so like if if, for example, Hollywood has a problem and they may fix some aspects of it, that those individuals may end up coming to Dana Beach, or they might go to Howlandale, just depending upon where they are and what where they feel more comfortable. So what I've been doing is I have been uh reaching out to a number of different resources. Um, I have met with um electeds in both Hollywood and Howlandale about um some potential ways that we might be able to work together uh for like a southeast Broward Task Force on homelessness. Um, I've also reached out to Sheriff Tony, uh had a meeting with him about it as well, um as and um the my counterparts in in the other cities have also been doing this, so we don't really have a plan formulated yet. We do have, there's there's some programs that I brought to their attention that we want to try to incorporate and maybe expand to work for the this part of um of Broward County um and try it out, see how it goes, so all I'm really asking for at this point is just to, one, I wanted to make everybody aware of what I was doing, and two, I wanted to just kind of um make sure that everybody's on on the same page and hope that you're all uh comfortable with me being our little liaison for the other cities and working with people on this, um since it is really something that's dear to my heart and something that I really, I I've spent a lot of time on in the past and that we continue to spend time on now. So uh I'll I'll have more details and provide them to you as they as we go along, um but I just, like I said, I wanted to just get consensus from everybody that I'm, it's good for me to be the person that's working with everybody through this.
No issues from me.
Everybody else is muted.
All good, no, I'm good. Good idea, Lori.
Great idea, thank you.
Okay, I will keep you posted as they go along, and um, you know, once we start actually having some meetings as a group, I'll make sure you're all you're aware of them, and um, you know, I'll fill you in on on some of the ideas that have come up, so obviously, we're not going to agree to do anything until um, you know, unless we come to the each of the commissions in each of the cities uh to make sure that that there's go ahead there to as far as resources and that sort of thing. Okay, thank you.
All right, um the next one is yours as well, possible parkland acquisition.
Yes, and it's not just parkland. Um, it's, okay, so this is this is where I'm going with this. We all know we've had a lot of development in Dana Beach, um and we continue to have more and more development in Dana Beach. Um, I I as I'm sure we all have, I have regular meetings with the city manager, um talking about different things that I I'd like to see improved, ways that we could um uh try to strategically do things so that we have sort of a plan for how the city is laid out and and just ways that we can actually um balance the development with green space. Um, so our city manager and I had had a conversation some time ago um about uh the potential for uh properties within the city that might be available for the city to actually purchase at some point in time that either don't have development on them already, or that might um be something like maybe something that isn't really available for development purposes, but might be something that's good for like green space, pocket parks, passive areas, that sort of thing. Um, and I and and city manager, you might be able to help me explain a little more about what you all have been doing, what I was talking to you about?
Certainly through the mayor, what we've been doing both in the city, and I met with Michael, to really look at all the opportunities with our existing green spaces and our existing lands, but also um lands that are not in the property of the city, and how we can look also at at foreclosures in the city. I know that Tom and Eve were looking at possible foreclosures. Just to put the city in the best position um through the budget workshop to be able to identify these and then come back to you and say, look at what we found, these are ours, these are could be good for expansion of parks, this could be good for um housing, this could be good for us to sell and put in 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 a fund for parks to augment um our our parks fee for the Parks Master Plan, but just basically have an assessment of all existing land that belongs to us and all land that is out there that could be a good opportunity that we could, you know, perhaps purchase.
Right, and and the whole the whole thing is so that we as a city can have some control over the way this is done, so it's not just strictly developers coming in and and purchasing land and and taking it over, and I mean, we all we all get the calls, we all know. Um, so it's just a way to try to um have a little balance overall in the city. I'm not really asking for anything on this, I just kind of wanted to make everybody aware of of where we've been going with this, and um again, and I the one ask I would say, though, is that um for the next budget, when we get to our budget workshops, I would like to see if there is a way that we could put some money into the budget for potential purchase of some of these properties. If they're foreclosed properties, obviously, there's maybe a bidding process, or it might be a little, it might be less expensive, who knows? Um, but and I'm not going to ask for a number, I'm not going to ask for anything like that. I kind of want to leave that up to city management and whoever, finance, whoever else is involved in reviewing these properties to see what's out there first, and then perhaps they can come to us when we get closer to budget workshop with a better assessment as far as what's available, how much money we we think we might need to put aside, and um just so that we have something in the budget, and who knows, with impact fees and everything else, we may not even need to put money aside, but I'd like to get, I'd like us to start focusing in that direction so that we can at least um see what's there and and see if we are going to need any money for the future.
Um, I I agree, number one, but I I I do think that if you got with, um, I know we have money for land acquisition in the CRA budget already approved. I'm not sure if you got with uh Mr. Chen or not, but I I would think that it would be beneficial because that was a conversation that I had with him, um because we, I have not heard of any kind of unique projects or things like that uh to to move that along. That's what that money is for, in order to go out and not for the existing land that we have that we want to program, but to to acquire more spaces, and then we could make a unique type of park. We can make a unique types of spaces with with that, so I'm not sure if you want to get with him because it's already there, and um I haven't seen an assessment of what's actually available. Actually, I had a developer call me, someone local, I guess, I'm, they're from Pompano or someone, called me and said, oh, do you have any land that we can buy in the city? I'm like, what? Like, I don't have lists of land just to give you and things of that nature, but I do think that we need to be one of the competitors in that, especially if we are developing and approving projects that has a lot of density, that people need places to go and to have recreational access and different different things, but I I want to see something more unique than just what we we approve and what we have currently, so I I do think that maybe you can get with with Mr. Chen and 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 see if those opportunities exist in the CRA area since it's already in in that budget, and and then when you look outside of the area, um, you know, we can come back and assess that within the budget, but I don't know why we have to wait until then. We already have the funds available for that.
Well, because this would not just be for the CRA, this is throughout um the entire city, so I want to look at projects, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of space, there are a lot of um, there's a lot of properties out west in particular that I think may be opportune for something like this. Um, and and I know, like I said, they're still doing an assessment with the city as far as available property, so I I kind of I I, the reason why I don't want us, it's not already budgeted, so I don't want us to start taking money out of reserves or anything like that. What I would like to do is make it something that we are looking for on a going going forward basis so that, and I purposely did this for citywide, so that it's not just in one neighborhood, it is, it's the entire city so that we can look. I think there's some areas, I think over in the southwest as well, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, no, that's, that's fine, that that it becomes citywide, but what I'm saying is because it's already available right now in the CRA, you can start looking there and then, you know, do two things at one time, like, all right, we already have it here, and this funding is for this area, but then you can also, while they're waiting for the assessment, everything else, and with the budget, because that's going to, regardless of whatever we say, it's going to wait until October, if we have the ability to start now within an area, I I think that would, you know, I don't think that will harm anything, that's what I'm saying.
Right, well, then I would, then I would, and I'm sure um our city manager will speak with um Mr. Chen about that as well, and I I suspect she may have in in some capacity already, because I know this has been an ongoing assessment that they've been doing throughout the entire city, so.
Yeah, through the mayor, if I may add, uh as a matter of fact, I met with um eh Michael, Executive Director of Chen, for about two and a half hours yesterday, and we discussed a multitude of things, and one of the things that I offered is that I would drive him um to all the different areas within the CRA, um because he's seen them on paper, and you know, he was very grateful and happy, so we're going to set up a meeting, mayor and commissioners, to actually look at every single one of the properties, so he can see them live, he can see what's around it, what are what are the specs and what are the possible opportunities, and we'll bring that report, you know, both on the CRA and on the city side.
Thank you.
So I don't, I don't know if I need a consensus or something, just as far as to go forward with this and and have further into it. I'm not asking for a number, just something to have the city kind of, the the management team come back to us with a with an assessment as far as what they found and and what their recommendation would be, if we need anything put into the budget.
I I'm okay, I'm okay with an assessment of what we have.
Me too.
Cool, we're good. That's fine, okay.
Commissioner comments, Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Uh, let's see. I just want to talk about a couple of events that I attended and a couple that I am looking forward to. I want to commend the Parks and Rec Department for a fantastic and very successful uh egg hunt for Easter. I was out there. Um, if you're not there at exactly eleven o'clock, you are going to miss the train. Those kids get out there and they had an amazing, amazing time. They um it was social distance, they had hand sanitizer, the bunny was dancing, and so um they really got there, you know, it was just, it was quick, it was short, but it was very beautiful, very well done, and very well organized, so I want to uh commend uh Director Eric Brown and Cassie and and the entire Parks and Rec staff for just doing a phenomenal job on the egg hunt. Um, that sa- same day, later that day, I also attended the Lions Um, that same day, later that day, I also attended the Lions Club inaugural scavenger hunt in the city. And, uh, they just did a phenomenal job, they took me to places in Dania Beach I had never seen before. Um, the Living Color Garden, Lotta Ale, and they really had us to go to very unique different places all around the city. We dressed up as a team, we were the Duchess of Dania Beach, and we went around as a team trying to find all these different places. So, I mean, that's just an idea for the city, it was just really good to find great little places that you don't see on a regular basis, um, with the Lions Club. And it was to benefit, um, uh, a, a vision impaired group, so Share the Vision is the name. So it was all to benefit for charity, so it was a very good event. And, um, I want to commend all those who put that together and invited me to attend. Um, coming up this Saturday, there is the Earth, Air, Fire and Water Show at WMOTA. I know that we recently put that on our website as well, but, um, Louise Irvine and her staff have done a phenomenal job getting ready for that. It's their kickoff to Earth, um, to, up to Earth Day. They've invited us to promote the beach cleanup there. And so we're looking forward to attending that event on this coming Saturday from ten to four P M. And last but not least, I'm very super excited about Earth Day on Thursday, the twenty second, from five to seven P M. The beach cleanup, the Keep Dania Beach Pristine initiative has really, um, taken a hold with a lot of different people in the community. I want to thank our staff for being so amazing. This is my, April sixteenth will be my six month anniversary here, and it's my first time getting to work with such an amazing group of people over a great time to come up with a great event. So I want to thank Katia for going out on the waters with me and the lifeguards for helping to promote this event and to really try to get people to understand that it's a community event. Our baskets have arrived, so I think we just have one, one, a more, once more, one through to go, a walkthrough to go, and we should be good to go. So I just want to thank everybody who's involved, everybody, the manager Candido who's been super outstanding and amazing, um, and all the departments as well. So I just want to thank everybody for helping me to, uh, get this event off the ground. And that'll be it.
Commissioner Laba?
Yes, um, I actually, I've had a busy couple of weeks myself. Um, first, I, I want to say thank you to the Public Services Department, Public Works, um, for paving Southeast Fourth Terrace. I know it's only a temporary fix, um, but it has made a huge, huge difference. It is no longer a roller coaster on that road. And, um, and you, you don't have to worry about being nauseous. Um, it's at least flat and it, and it is much safer and, uh, it, it's just much better. So I want to say publicly thank you to everybody in Public Services. Secondly, um, I attended the MPO meeting last week, or, yeah, last week. They had a, a hybrid virtual and in-person meeting. Um, it, and there's a lot of money that's coming in. That's going to be available for, um, a variety of infrastructure projects all over the county. It, it, it's gonna include money that's gonna be able to go to broadband as well. Not just talking about, you know, shovel-ready projects, but broadband projects as well as sea level rise projects and things like that. Something that we did do was we approved the, the creation of an ad hoc committee on infrastructure and attainable housing, which is, um, residents, um, and individuals who, uh, are part of this board that, uh, will help work towards this. And actually, I may even ask Frank to add something about it because we have two, uh, Dania Beach affiliated people on that board. We have former Commissioner Bill Harris is a member of that ad hoc committee, as well as our own Frank DePaolo, our finance, uh, uh, director, who is also on that committee. And in addition to that, then I'm also a board member. So I will tell you that Dania Beach has some serious representation at the MPO, uh, board, which is really good for us because that's an opportunity for us to, um, really have a strong voice and, and get things heard and get things done in our city and make some things a priority, which we need to do, we know we need to do. And so I have, I have very high hopes about that. But anyway, so that's, and that's part of, uh, what the federal government's doing right now with the infrastructure issue. So this is something that's been going through, uh, uh, Department of, uh, Transportation. And it was something that's, it's through the federal government that they wanted these committees formed. So that's what's happening there. Um, next, um, the Mar- uh, the Maritime Industry Job Training Program. Uh, I've had a couple of meetings about it. One, uh, I went to the Port Everglades Association luncheon, the mayor was there, as was Commissioner Davis, as was Mayor Hollywood, as were a number of people in the, in the marine industry, as there always are. Um, I had an opportunity to tell people about the program and what was going on with it. Got a very good response after the, after the luncheon. I had several people from, uh, from the various industries come and talk to me about it, and they are very interested in, in being involved, participating, possibly helping us to expand it, um, doing whatever they can to help support it. So it was very helpful, and, um, we had a little challenge going as to whether or not Hollywood might want to start a program similar so that they can, um, also help their residents as well. So that was good. I also met with, um, the Dania Beach Housing Authority and Dania Beach Quality Housing Board about the program as well, provided them the information about it, and copied the flyers. And the executive director of the Housing Authority has offered to do a targeted mailing to, um, individuals in Dania Beach, uh, who are part of the Housing Authority or are involved in the program, and will actually help us to promote it as well to see if anybody wants to jump on board. So the, those are a couple of very positive things. And I know there are some other meetings coming up this week and next week with a number of other groups that, um, will be able to get the word out on it as well. Last thing I just wanted to mention is, I know, um, I had sent an email a couple of weeks ago and, um, about meetings. And I just wanted to throw it out there, I don't know if it's something the city manager's gonna talk about or anything in her report, but, um, the virtual meetings, I know we didn't have a decision officially as to how long we were gonna continue the virtual meetings or if we were gonna go to live meetings yet. And my, my purpose for bringing it up in the first place was because of the concerns from the CDC about the fact that people are not going to be fully vaccinated likely until, um, we get through May. Um, I know I just got my first shot, um, and by the time I get my second shot, and then you have to wait a certain amount of time, it's gonna be a while. And I, and I'm more concerned about the public than I am actually about us. I mean, I know I should be concerned about us as well, but, um, I'm more concerned about the public because I don't want to give the perception that, that, you know, we're saying it's safe to, to gather in, in closed spaces. Um, so I, I just wanted to throw that out there. I don't know if that's something we want to discuss at this time or, um, how you want to handle it, but I think we need to discuss it. And I'm not asking, I don't think it should be a long time, but I think we need to give everybody an opportunity to get vaccinated before we start telling them all to come and gather in a public space.
I think we should discuss it. Uh, and I, and I think that, um, with, with the amount of events that are going on in our city, I'm not saying that, obviously, we would have to have precautions in place and, um, rules and regulations and only a limited amount, but, um, I do think that we need to go back to, uh, in-person meetings. Um, I, I think that we discussed, actually, we discussed, uh, a start time of the second, um, meeting in April, I believe. But, um, it wasn't anything that was, uh, motioned and seconded, we kind of informally discussed that. Um, I don't see a problem with going back to in-person meetings as long as we have the, the, um, distance guidelines, that we can open up the atrium and, and when we're at capacity, you just can't come in. I, I think I spoke with the city manager before about, you know, maybe having a signage sheet or you sign up to be able to come to the meetings and not you still attend virtually, but to have both options. Um, as many events that we are going to and meetings that we are having, I, I, you know, I, I think that we are okay with, um, going back in-person meetings. So that's, that's my take on it. Everyone's not gonna get vaccinated, even if you wait, you know, you, you're not, we're not gonna be able to say, "Oh, do you have your vaccination cards?", and, you know, "Show me this or show me that", and some may not choose to get vaccinated and still want to come to the meetings. So, um, I think that I, I've, I'm ready to go back into in-person meetings, so, it's my opinion.
Anybody else want to add?
I will add, my-
Yeah, we're here.
All right, um, I'm personally anxious to go back, um, in person, but I just want to know what the, what the data says as far as the, you know, I know we get those weekly reports, but I can't tell you that I keep track of, you know, the trends and, you know, how many cases, you know, are increasing. Obviously, for me, I want to do what's best and safest for the public. So, um, if, if the data supports, you know, waiting a, you know, a week or two, I mean, I, I, or another session or two, then, then, you know, I'm fine with waiting. If it's, if it's okay, we can do it safely. You know, um, um, I'm, I make sure that I come here every week anyway because I'd like to be in person. There's something about being in person for me that works that virtual doesn't. But obviously, my number one concern is that it's safest for the public. And if the data, uh, supports that it's safer to wait for, uh, you know, another session or two, I'm, I'm willing to do that. So it just really, to me, that would depend on what the numbers say.
Um, what was the, so we don't have any, we had a tentative date of the twenty seventh?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and then our next meeting after the- So i- if we wanted to, um, eh, since there has been an upswing, um, due to the, the variance, um, in the last, over the last fourteen days in Florida, if you wanted to do a reassessment of the data at the next meeting, we could look a, a, at then, that would give us another two weeks. And we could look at the fourteen day outlook and make the decision then to come back at the first meeting in May. Uh, I, I would say at this point, do a two-week evaluation because you, you really need to look at the fourteen day data assessment. So if at this point, some of you are unsure of public safety, um, my, my advice would be to, um, at Commissioner's comments or whatever, at the next meeting, uh, make the decision then if you want to do an in-person for the eleventh.
Well, can everyone else mute their mics because there's still a lot of feedback, so.
This is why I don't do my comments.
I'll, I'll try without my, uh, my friends here. Uh, anyhow, the, uh, I, I liked what Commissioner Oddman said, but I think that, I'm sorry, it goes. Um, I think that, uh, next meeting, I think we should go ahead and evaluate. And I think we should evaluate each time until everybody's content with, uh, with the, with the things are. I'm ready to go back, but I want to be safe. And, um, you know, I've, you know, I've, I've got a little bit of a, I'm not saying that I'm hiding out anywhere and I'm not, uh, telling you I'm, uh, not going out, but I, I, when I started getting into crowds, if you, I go to restaurants to try to stay away as much, and I guess masks will help, but, um, you know, I think, I think each two weeks, like, uh, next, next meeting, I think somebody, uh, mayor if you like, or, uh, Commissioner Oddman, or even the manager brings a report to see where we are, whether we're back to an upswing or whether we're stable. I think at that time, we could make a, a choice to try to go back. I, you know, if we go back one week and then also there's an upswing or somebody, City Hall gets it again, then we shut City Hall back down again, and that could be, uh, a setback for us. I, I think, I think, I think she's right, uh, Commissioner Oddman's got a good, a good idea, that next week let's evaluate, and at that point, if we're ready to go back, we do the first, uh, meeting in May. So, I mean, that's, that's just my opinion.
I would venture to say, since Commissioner Oddman is the person with medical expertise, that we'll follow, follow her lead on that to bring us back that information. I know she's data-driven.
Yeah, no problem. So for the next meeting, I'll make sure that, um, that I have that, uh, that fourteen day, uh, data, um, that is current as of that meeting. And, uh, we can, I'll just let you know what it is, and we can make that decision there. And fingers crossed, we can, we can go back to that, uh, that meeting, the first meeting in May.
Okay.
And that's all I have for my comments, so, thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Odd, Commissioner Oddman, how are you?
Oh, all right, mine's quick. Um, we had a meeting with Stacy Brown from, uh, Thousand Mermaids this past week, um, regarding that email you had all received about the various dates for events coming up. So as Commissioner Davis had mentioned, April seventeenth, there's the WMOTA. Um, they're doing the, the Earth Day event, so the selfie tale will be on display there. They're gonna do a little scavenger hunt and some sort of sculpting and reef talk. Um, there's still, we are going to do the, the ocean cleanup with Commissioner Davis's, um, cleanup on the twenty second, but it was requested that we do a separate event. So we're working on putting that together and finding a date. Uh, the dates after that for the ribbon cutting, um, the deployment, um, those things are, it's gonna be something where, as we get a little bit closer because it's so weather dependent. Uh, but anticipate late May. But we're gonna be in close contact with Stacy, and the second that we get, uh, ma- mayor June, mayor June, um, that as we get closer, I'll, I'll keep updating you about those events. And so it'll be for the deployment, the ribbon cutting, and then, um, uh, we had talked about doing, uh, the, the dive and, you know, whatever degree everyone either wanted to dive or be in the boat or snorkel or snuba, you know, all that stuff. Uh, basically, to, to be decided. Um, but the only firm, firm date right now that I have for you is the seventeenth at WMOTA. Uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, um, I don't have many comments, I, I do know that whenever we are, uh-
About, about me, I'm like, I'll be for you.
About you, I'm so sorry.
Why do you keep forgetting me? Do I need to grow here, ready to grow along here or something, or? Okay, well, I have a few things tonight, Mayor, if you don't mind, thank you. Um, you know, uh, I'm, uh, I'd like to bring up, uh, an event that's gonna be happening on September eleventh that's been posted, uh, by the Dania Beach Lions Club, uh, for the benefit of Nicholas James Costello, um, you know, Foundation. Um, I'm just, it's gonna be at the Dania Point Project, we used to have that, uh, event all the time. Uh, it used to be held at the beach, Dania Point is, uh, offering to host this for them. It will be on September eleventh from five P M. to ten P M. Uh, hoping everybody will show up down there for that. I have, uh, I do want to tell you that I am excited about Commissioner Davis's beach cleanup, uh, pristine beach cleanup, and that, uh, I've gotten, uh, a few phone calls, I've referred one of them to her, a couple more have come in from other, uh, clubs that are gonna have, uh, people show up. I'm sure that each club will have anywhere from fifteen to, uh, people or more. So I think you're gonna have a lot of people down there, I hope you have enough baskets. Um, I do know that, uh, the Lions Club is gonna show up. I do know that Gang Girls Wrestling School is gonna show up. I know I'm gonna show up with some of my friends and neighbors. Uh, so your, your, your beach cleanup will be a success, and, uh, Dania Beach will look, uh, pristine when we're done. Um, the, uh, Lions Club also, I mean, uh, uh, Cobra Joe and the Lions Club would like to, uh, put an Italian American festival on. Uh, I recommend it to them to, uh, when the times open and we do go back, uh, to Dania Point, uh, I mean, to the downtown, uh, City Hall area, uh, to recommend that. I'm trying to keep, uh, you know, we talked a little bit with the city manager about this in regards to not running on the grass anymore today, parks and so on. Um, and, uh, we, I, I'm gonna probably put that on the agenda for, on approval for them to use, I'm sorry.
Did you say that in the?
I'm sorry.
Repeat that about not going on the grass?
Let me get my, let me contain my, my words here. Uh, no, the Italian American Festival, when they, I'm gonna put on the agenda to see if we can get the city to approve use of, uh, City Hall area like we do the, at Dania After Point, uh, Dania After Dark. And then, um, as long as we are allowed to have an event at that time, they're looking to do it in, uh, uh, closer to, uh, October. So by that time, we'll, uh, we should be, hopefully, know where we are with, uh, the CDC and the coronavirus and variants and so on. Uh, hopefully through Commissioner Oddman will give us reports, and hopefully they're gonna be good reports. Uh, but I'll be bringing that up. Um, I, I think it's exciting to start bringing festivals back into our city again, and I will be bringing that up to, uh, the commission, uh, for approval. uh, for approval. Uh, they don't, they are not gonna ask the city for any money, uh, they will independently run the whole thing themselves. The last thing I have is that, uh, uh, this is, uh, through you, Mayor, to the city manager. Uh, I think that we need to, uh, as soon as possible, uh, start posting our plan on the phase two on the beach, and to, uh, let, um, uh, let the residents know our intentions of the, of the, uh, parking garage, the, uh, the, uh, the purchasing, possible purchasing of the, the parking, uh, area from the, uh, D O T, uh, the revision of phase two, uh, the ideas that we have, uh, for the Daniel Beach Grill and for the, uh, restaurant next to the bridge. I think if we can get this all together and, uh, maybe try to get it done in the next thirty, sixty days and get it posted out there, so the residents have a view of this that are questioning us, I think it's important to let them know. I think they're, I think some of the comments and stuff that I read, I think they don't think we're working on this. I think it'd be advisable for them to, uh, us to be more transparent with this project and bring it out there so that they can see that we are diligently working on it, and that there, there is a step process, and possibly, you know, itemize those step processes, show them what we're doing. And I think that they'll be happy with, with, with what we've got planned. And I think that would ease their, um, uh, their, uh, maybe, uh, aggravation for not doing anything. So that's just something I'd like to ask, uh, you to do, that, you know, I know it's a lot, but I think we talked about it. I think it's not far off of what, uh, we're trying to accomplish to get that, that phase going. So I think once we do get that phase started, I think it's gonna accelerate fast, and I think the residents will be really, really pleased with our, our plan that we've gotten placed. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I was gonna start with that, so, um, I, I, I go back and forth a lot with a lot of our residents. I don't even know if some of them are from, from Daniel, but, you know, I've invited them to, to, um, listen in on these meetings. Um, we are being transparent, and, and I, and I asked the city manager time and time again, and I asked the city attorney time and time again, where are we on the R F P? You know, what are we doing? Please give an update. And I was actually going to ask, we give another update today, um, in case any of, uh, our Facebook friends or our constituents are, are on here listening. I'm not sure where we are currently with the R F P. I know we were waiting on F A U. Um, I know that we are doing a number of things, like we approved the purchase of the additional property. I know that we are moving forward with the parking garage. I know it is in all of our priorities, as I have stated, um, time and time again, and, and it's not something that it is being forgotten about. It's, we're not building high rises. Um, this isn't a Morton's Restaurant on the beach that we had a vision for. And so I just wanna continue to assure the public that we are, um, prioritizing the Daniel Beach Bar and Grill and the entire beach, in that we're just not going to put something there to appease, um, people who are frustrated, because I think all of us are frustrated. I think all of us like visiting and frequenting, um, you know, a, a local hole-in-the-wall type spot that was on the beach. Um, I do think that there does need to be an educational, a visual educational type of component part to it. I'm not sure if that is, um, putting something coming soon, or just a, some type of a rendering of what phase two looks like, or, or some type of signage that lets them know that, um, we are working on things, but I would like to be updated with where we are on the R F P, because I don't have any new information to give to our residents outside of the fact that we are putting out a R F P. And they, they're getting on me saying, you've been saying that for a year and a half, or whatever it is. I wanna move forward, and, and it's true, but I wanna move forward past that to see what is next, and I'm gonna continue to put pressure on staff, uh, in our city to make sure that we are prioritizing this, because it is something that, um, it is an eyesore, and I, I know that we wanna move past this. So I don't know if Tom or, or the city manager wants to give us a brief update on where we are with the Daniel Beach Bar and Grill situation.
I do. I had it on my manager's report, but I'll, um, facilitate this information now. So we've been meeting with the different entities. As a matter of fact, last week, um, our, our city attorney, our city attorney's office, um, sent out the letter of intent to purchase, um, to, um, the Department of Transportation. Um, we are also completing, um, our, our term agreement to F A U. We're, we're dealing with, uh, three different agencies, including ourselves. Um, we also have put together, uh, a, a special city team, um, from procurement to finance to legal. Um, and we will be issuing the R F P. We have our self-imposed deadline of next month by May twenty-eighth, so that R F P will be out. We are working with signage, with parks, and also with, with signage, with public services that will include all the projects that are moving forward, in, not just the R F P for the grill, but the master plan for the entire beach. Um, the four hundred thousand dollar project that's coming forward for the Toodly Adler Park, um, for the grant that, that, um, we were able to get from the state. Um, so there's going to be a ton of information, both physically at the, the site of the grill and, and the beach and, and the park, but also we're going to have a landing page on our website to be able to, um, communicate everything that we're doing, um, to our residents. Um, the beach master plan is a fluid document. It also calls for the removal of a hundred and sixty-eight parking spaces on the first row. We're not gonna be removing any parking spaces, folks, because as it is, our beach has become very popular. So until we're able to build the parking garage, um, that, that, that master plan will be able to have certain elements that we can move forward with immediately, and certain, um, items that we're not going to do, which is remove parking spaces. I know that's something that I've discussed with many of the residents, but we have a deadline, and within, um, next month, that R F P will be out. We've been mentioning the grill at every meeting. We've actually received unsolicited proposals. I've had both Tom and Eve reach out to people and let them know. Stay tuned, because at the end of next month, you're gonna be seeing an R F P. So all these conversations that we're having in a very transparent way has really created a lot of interest. So there's going to be a very, very exciting time in our city, like the mayor says. We're gonna do things, and we're gonna do things right. But like I said, it, it, it's taking this time, not just because of COVID, but because we're dealing with a multitude of, of agencies to be able to bring this multi-agency project into fruition. So within the next couple of weeks, you're gonna be seeing signage, you're gonna be seeing a wrap around the grill with what's to come, and a landing page to get as much information as possible to our entire community and those outside of our community as well.
So what did you say? Was the holdup on the R F P currently?
No, there's no holdup on the R, R F P. We're, we're, we, the R F P. The R F P consists of a lot of elements that need to go into play. So when you're an interested person, you wanna know, for example, um, did the city issue a letter of intent? Is the city going to be looking to, um, to add additional parking? Oh, by the way, will the city hold off on removing, uh, parking? Um, what else are we doing in regards to the rest of the facility? Drainage projects that are, that are moving forward, the parks plan. There are so many things going on in the beach, not just the Daniel Beach Grill, but the entire beach and a multitude of projects that we're working on. So it, it's a very intricate pro, uh, process to put together the request for proposal, because there's a lot of, of questions that we anticipate, and a lot of zoning information that we need to give. The more information that we put in an R F P, the more of, of a wider net that we can cast in regards to interest, and not just locally, but throughout the state and the nation.
Uh, yeah, I understand that. I was just, I guess I was asking, because the last time I asked, it said the holdup was F A U. We've had this process, we've been waiting on this process for a very long time, so you're telling me in the next month, I'm gonna hold you to the end of next month, but it has to, has to, has to be taken care of, and it has to go out. It just, it just, we've been waiting for far too long, and I know it's a lot going on, but that needs to be at the top of the list. We have to get that R F P out. We have to get moving. We have to see something more than just, we have to have tangibles than just telling them, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, because it's coming is, is done, it's old. You can't tell anyone else that again, like, you know.
Mayor, I've, I've never missed a, a, a deadline in my career, so when I tell you that this will be out before May twenty-eighth, May twenty-eighth, the, the, the latest, the latest it will occur. I mean, we've even brought in, um, our county commissioner into the mix, um, and, and Tom can fill you in on that. So there hasn't been a week that we're not meeting with some entity, whether internal or external, in regards to, um, putting this complex document together, so.
All right, everybody, you've heard it. No lo- no later than May twenty-eighth, so we can all, all blob and, and say that. And I appreciate staff and everyone who is working hard, but I am definitely going, going to be one really continuing to ask, ask, ask about it, um, as, as it is a priority. So thank you. Uh, the next thing I would, I, I don't know if Commissioner Davis is, um, I know you've been working with Parks and Rec, but I would love to see some of our youth advisory council, um, at the beach cleanup next week. I think that would be awesome. I know they have their, their little shirts, and to try to get them some notoriety in, in their first community, um, you know, event that they can go in, and definitely lend a hand. I think it'll be a great exposure for them, so I don't, I'm not sure if you can get, I know you have your walkthroughs, and you are the liaison for this, um, beach day cleanup, but definitely please include the Yak. Um, and I'm not sure who this is to. Oh, hi, hi, um, Director Brown, do you think that the Yak could be a part of it? They wanna be a part of it? Yeah, okay, hold on, I'm not sure why you unmuted. Can someone unmute Eric? All right, there you, oh, oh. You, you good?
Yes, I'm good. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, City Attorney, Eric Brown, Parks and Rec Director. The Yak team will be about, they will be playing a part of this, um, cleanup. They'll be in full force with their new, um, shirts that they designed. They'll be wearing them, and they'll be a part of it. So they will, they will be on a team.
All right, we're gonna have a big, big bash on the beach. All right.
We are asking everybody to wear the, uh, Earth Day vote t-shirts for the.
Yeah, yeah, they, they're gonna have those too.
They'll, they'll put them on out there.
I, I, I get, everybody else is doing the same thing. I have no problem. Just give us one. Oh.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Eric is wondering, uh, on that day when, uh, Commissioner Davis has her thing at five o'clock, is there any way that, uh, you can block off maybe, uh, twenty parking spots for, uh, for the, you know, the committees that are coming out there like us, and maybe, you know, your own staff and stuff, so we can all collaborate in one spot?
Well, I know that we, we went through, uh, Eric, um, from parking with that, so I'll follow up, and I'm pretty sure that we can, without a doubt. I know that he'll have parking passes for those folk, um, that will be coming to the, to the, uh, event.
Yeah, it's usually like the last lane that they kinda block off, or they'll have to be there, so, okay.
We can make that happen in our next walkthrough. We'll walk through and, um, we'll look at that. But I know parking passes was discussed.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. The last thing I wanted to, um, mention is I'm not sure who is in charge of the F E C or the Bright Line, or whatever the train is doing the work there. But whenever they are going to close those intersections for the amount of time that they have been randomly closing it and have not been communicating with us, that needs to be a problem. I have called, you know, uh, Captain Marks, uh, to try and help the situation, and it's not on him to facilitate that. It's supposed, they're supposed to provide, um, us with, uh, I think the Highway Patrol or Fort Highway Patrol or someone like that. But there have been instances where I was there, and people, and you, they only have the workers when the, the lanes to try and stop, and people are flying through there. I've almost seen a, a few workers almost get hit, because there is no law enforcement at these intersections. If we're going to close these intersections for the amount of times that they're closing, and sometimes they're closed for twenty minutes at a time, all three, and that is a major, major, major concern and a major hazard, it is, I, I think that they need to better communicate with the cities. So maybe we can add a detour, or we can let, um, our residents know, um, what's going to be happening at what times. But definitely, there, there has to be mandatory that there is some type of law enforcement at these, at these stops, because someone is going to get killed at one of these intersections, because they are not respecting, you know, just the people with their little shirts on. They, we need to have something done about that, and I'm not sure if it's Bright Line or F E C, City Manager.
We, we have reached out, uh, Mayor, um, eh, both Dinsler and, and Fernando, because we also find that to be unacceptable. Um, we have seen on, on, on Sterling and the railroad crossing, um, and, and additional, uh, B S O. But, um, our communication to them is to send us the information as soon as they have it, and to ensure that in every single crossing, there is someone there, B S O, or whatever other entity as a preventive measure, cuz we've seen that as well, and that is our concern as well.
Okay, thank you. And that, that is it for my, my comments. Appointment is the Broward League of Cities, um, director appointment is first on the list. I'm not sure if anybody wanted to be considered for it. I definitely wanna be considered for this appointment. I think that, uh, this would be a great appointment, so.
Like to be considered as well, as an alternate or either.
All right, well, I don't know if I'm allowed to double nominate, but, uh, Mayor, I know you were, uh, interested last time, and while I've enjoyed my, my year, or year and how, uh, however long it's been, or two years, um, on the Broward League, I'm happy to, uh, let other people have that experience and continue with the strong relationships that we have felt, uh, built with, uh, now-President Colari. Um, I'm not sure if either of you have attended any of the meetings or any of the events, but it, it's really, um, it's, it's a great group of people. Uh, it's a great place to springboard some great ideas. So, uh, I, I would like to nominate Mayor James, uh, to replace, uh, my position, and to nominate Commissioner Davis as, uh, first alternate. Um, and, uh, if I can nominate myself for alternate two.
I, if I could, I'd like to actually be one of the alternates as well, because I don't need to be the director, but I'd like to be one of the alternates, because I have been going to the events as well as attend, I was also on a task force for the Fleet of Cities. So I think that that should have some impact on it.
Do you have to be an alternate to, to attend? The meetings?
The alternates are for, um, so if, if I can't go, before, uh, Chickie Brandon Marty was, was our alternate one, and she never went, but, um, but that's why I would love to have Commissioner Davis as alternate one, uh, because she seems very responsible and like somebody who would go. So you really want your alternate one to be a person who's gonna go, uh, hopefully you'll attend all meetings, but if you're ever in a jam, um, it, it really is important that we have someone there. So, uh, sure, Commissioner, Commissioner Llewellyn, if it would make you happy, uh, we're pushing, enjoy it. Uh, so she can be alternate two. Uh, so my nominations are as follows. Uh, Mayor James for, uh, to take over my position, Commissioner Davis to be alternate one, and Commissioner Llewellyn to be alternate two. Is there a second for that?
Second, um. Yeah. But we'll do them all at once, I guess, when we finish the appointments.
Okay, cool.
Any other appointments? I, I don't have any, anybody else for these appointments, so I, I'm not sure what to do with them. I'm not even. Are all these boards meeting? Tom Snyder?
Um, I don't think the airport or Creative Arts are meeting. Education is. Uh, G E is, of course. The Green Advisory Board is meeting. I'm, when I say meeting, they're meeting virtually. I don't believe the Marine Advisory Board has met yet, and nor the Parks and Rec, but Eric can add something with the Parks and Rec if he knows information I don't know.
Okay, does anyone have, um, any other appointments that they want to add? Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Oddman, I have zero. Uh, we're the only ones left. Oh, Commissioner Llewellyn, you have one for Parks?
I, I don't have anybody. I, I'm having some.
I have someone that would like to be on, on the Parks, if you, I know they're not meeting, but.
Um, I, well, I kinda wanna wait until they're meeting before I make an appointment, or know that they're going to be meeting.
They just had a schedule out. Go ahead, Eric.
Both, both Parks and Marine Advisory Board are meeting this week for the first time, so they'll be meeting virtual, um, on Zoom. And the Advisory Board met last week from Parks, so all three of our boards are back up and running, um, and they will be meeting.
Okay, I'll have an appointment at the next meeting.
Okay, I'll have an appointment at the next meeting.
All right.
I have an appointment for the uh airport, even though it's not uh meeting right now, Mario Cahill. I hey guys, um Junior, uh Tom, I will e- I'm emailing you his information now, so. You will have somebody for the airport. I have somebody for the airport.
Thank you.
All right, um do we have a motion in a second to accept the appointments?
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna go a little bit out of order to just um reemphasize what I just mentioned. That it's in my manager's report, that my, you know, and every manager's report is also part of the agenda. That the LOI or the Letter of Intent to enter into a purchase agreement with the OT. For a parcel of land um at the beach, one point four acres. Um has been sent to the Department of Transportation by our city attorney and the office of the city attorney that has been working together. With the office of the manager to send this out. So that is, the ball is on their court in regards to that. Um as discussed at the last commission meeting, we have a uh assembled a team. Um of experts from every single department um that is crafting the requests for proposals. For the Dana Beach Grill, and that will be out no later than May twenty-eighth. Um I also wanted to let everybody know that today, this afternoon, we kicked off um. An additional phase of our RISE initiative, which RISE stands for Respect, Integrity, and a Standard of of Excellence. And it and it's not just a wo- a work culture, but it's pretty much a a way of life. We cannot be at work a certain way. And, you know, and be out and about in our community and be totally different. We're all representing the city of Dana Beach. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year, uh twenty-four seven, pretty much. And um I I'm I'm very, very happy and proud to say that we had approximately ninety to ninety-five percent of our entire workforce. Participate on on this um eh Zoom call today, and it was really, really amazing to have everybody. From legal to the CRA to the entire city um participate on on my manager's message. Um and I also let them know what great support we've been having from all of you. Um so we're gonna be able to put that up so everybody could see, um but we're very happy about that. Um this Earth Week, not Earth Day, but Earth Week is going to be a very, very busy one. It's going to be, you know, something that we've never done in the city before. And we're gonna continue to do this every year, um not just in twenty twenty-one. So um we will comment Earth Week on um either Tuesday, April the twentieth, or Wednesday, April twenty-first. According to um your availability, but we have a ribbon cutting that we want to schedule at five o'clock. We'll be out of there by five thirty. So um April twentieth um or April twenty-first, Tuesday or Wednesday, whatever's better. Uh for you all, eh we did an assessment of our city cemetery. And we really found that our East Cemetery was not um to a standard of excellence that we would want. Um so we're going to be kicking off Earth Week with a planting of fifty beautiful oak trees at our cemetery. And I just needed to know from all of you, um is is Tuesday, April the twentieth? Or Wednesday, um April the twenty-first, better?
Can we possibly do it the last week? I'm not sure how I'm gonna respond to my surgery tomorrow, so I don't. I don't know. Does it have to be next week?
It doesn't. I mean, Earth Week is, and Earth Day is every day, so if if you want. Me to postpone this ribbon cutting, Mayor, your colleagues are shaking their heads. Certainly, we can continue to celebrate beyond uh the week of Earth Week. Um however you want to do it, that's why I always like to give you a couple of dates.
What what time? What time? Because I'm I'm really trying to already make the twenty-second. Could it be before that one? Could it be before the the beach cleanup, since the beach cleanup is in the evening? Can we do like a quick ribbon cutting first?
Uh let's see, we have the beach cleanup at five. If you guys are available on the twenty-second to do a a a four P M ribbon cutting, and then we can all head out to the beach.
That's gonna be hectic for me. You have an event day, if you've ever planned event, event day is all day. Not really, I can just pop up. Well, I don't anyway. I like to make sure that all, everything is ready to go for the public, so. The day before I would try to do it, but the day of would be too much for me.
If Wednesday, the twenty-first, Mayor, I don't know if if that gives you a week post your surgery. It it's basically just a ribbon cutting, because we wanted to include you. If you don't want to do a ribbon cutting, I will follow your lead in regards to that, but it's so significant, because it's just fifty beautiful oak trees. That we're going to be planting at the East Cemetery, and it's. It it's up to you. I'll work around your schedules and make it happen whenever you guys want to do it.
Could we do it on Friday?
Yeah.
I'll be, I won't be here on Friday. My only restriction is I can't do it on Friday, and it's not at pickup time for for school. So like, give me an hour to pick up my kids. Other than that, any other time.
If, and if you do it, and you have to do it on a on Wednesday, the twenty-first, and I know we have to see how the mayor is feeling, I understand that. Um but if we have to do it on the twenty-first, can we do it later? I, it's Wednesday, like I said, Wednesdays are gonna be bad for me for the next couple of months.
You tell me. If you guys, we'll be there. You know, if if you want to do it Wednesday at six, I'll have you out of there. In thirty minutes. It's basically a ribbon cutting. You guys will say your things, we'll take some photos. There, I mean, it's fifty trees, and we'll make it happen. You tell me.
Right, but I don't think I can get there that early. That's my point.
It's daylight savings time, so.
So what 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 day are you available, Commissioner Llewellyn?
I I can do Tuesday, but I don't want to rush you from your recovery.
Let's just do it, um.
Tuesday at what time?
See how you're gonna feel, though, I mean.
I mean, that's.
Well, let's set tentative tentatively Tuesday at what time?
At five o'clock? Are you are you are you all good at five o'clock? Get you out of there by five thirty? Okay, so then we have Tuesday. Unless we hear something that the mayor is is not up to it, and then we'll reschedule it. Let's just do tentative Tuesday, April the twentieth. At five P M at the East Cemetery for the ribbon cutting of the fifty oaks. Um we have our um pristine Dana Beach, pristine beach event. Um like Commissioner Davis said, on April twenty-second at five P M, and and that's Thursday, and that's gaining a. A lot of steam, and we're gonna have a lot of participation. Um on Friday morning, we are going to be um. Working with some of the residents that were responsible for the original Butterfly Garden that used to be on on Sheridan. Um in Fifth Avenue, so if you want to come by anytime between nine and noon, we will be planting with with the residents. Um as we've had to relocate um the 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 Butterfly Garden. Um if you can't make it during that time eh between the hours of one and four. Um if you can coordinate with Chris, we are going to leave additional spaces to be able to plant some additional trees. If you want to participate in that, we can include you as well. Uh but that's very, very exciting project um that we're going to be finishing up the Friday of a very busy Earth Week. So we are working with our HR Director to have a monthly theme. This is something that um actually it it was the mayor's idea, and we really liked it. And so clearly, April is is Earth Month, so we all have these these um these these little buttons. So every month, we're gonna be creating this uh type of um both, you know, community and employee. Um type of theme month. Um one of the things that I'll be discussing also with with Mike. From the CRA is maybe we can have these themes also working together, and we will help the CRA as they begin to plan. Um for the um Dana After Dark events, and maybe we can theme some of these things. So we're very excited about that. Um on April fifteenth, um this week, actually Thursday, we're going to have our final strategic planning session. Um with the mayor and and commission, so we're very excited um to be able to do that. And bring this very, very um significant document for adoption. Um most likely in May and no later than June. Um our finance director is preparing the budget schedule for um fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And we'll be sending that information out to all of you. Um we will be uh adopting the the village at the July thirteenth meeting. And then we're very grateful um that you guys have given us that that break eh between the the second meeting. I mean, the first meeting in July, excuse me, and that last meeting in August, because it seems that we're always in 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 agenda mode. So we'll be sending out that schedule uh to you. Um so Eric, our Park Director, has reached out to B and A, Bermello Ahemil. Um to schedule uh a Parks Master Plan Workshop. Uh so we can move forward with some of these initiatives and actually be able to uh put a dollar figure and a game plan together. And B and A has given us three dates, um May eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. From five to seven, and um whatever works for you, works for us, works for Parks, and works for um. Eh our B and A representative.
Are we doing that right now?
Yes, please. I mean, I I always like to bring this so we can nail the dates and move on.
May, may eighteen is the is is the date I can do.
I can do May eighteen.
Everybody's good, Mayor? May eighteenth, five to seven? Okay, so May eighteen, thank you so much. We will be scheduling our Parks Master Plan uh Workshop. And um that concludes my manager's report, so thank you so much.
City Attorney, thank you.
Yes, uh Mayor, I wanted to follow up on your initial comment about former mayor and Commissioner Pat Fleury. Who left a wonderful legacy uh with her dedication uh to this city for her service here. She's a wonderful lady. Uh rose up from the ranks uh as a nurse at the Hollywood Regional Hospital, became the administrator of that place. Just an amazing force, an amazingly smart woman and kind woman. And she is a someone we can always look up to, to remember how she helped uh the city uh realign itself on a financial footing. Because of her eh experience in that. She was just so dedicated and and admit, just a real credit, a real legacy to us, so. God bless her. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk.
All right, uh upcoming meetings, this Thursday, April fifteenth, as the manager had stated, at five thirty is your uh strategic plan session. Then Tuesday, April twenty-seven, at seven P M is your regular city commission meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, and with that, we are adjourned. Have a good night.
Mayor, have a good surgery.
Good luck, feel better.
Hope everything goes well.
Favorite place on earth to personally invite you to our special Earth Day event. On April twenty-second from five to seven P M. This is a free, family-friendly event. We want you to bring your kids, bring your friends, tell everybody. To come and help us to keep Dana Beach pristine. You will have free parking passes. We're gonna have great contests and prizes. So we really want to see you right here on April twenty-second, and you will also get a free t-shirt. Come help us make Dana Beach pristine. Dana Beach is truly my happy place. It's where I come to pray and start my day, relieve all stress and worries and cares. But unfortunately, over the past fourteen years, I have seen increased pollution on our beach. That's why I need you, our community, to come and help us.
We welcome you to our lovely beach. We just ask when you're here, just be mindful of others and be mindful of the environment. So when you're here, make sure you pick up after yourself. Just be aware of unintentional littering, which could be the wind blowing your. Paper bags, your plastic bags, your napkins into the dunes. When you leave fishing line around or other things like that, or plastic that sometimes birds will ingest, they become very sick. We've uh rescued many birds over the past six months. Could be something that's prevented, so just be very mindful of the wildlife out here as well.